Thank you, and welcome to tonight's council meeting held on Monday the 17th of October 2022. I welcome everyone tonight, and I would also like to acknowledge the Islander people, the traditional owners of the land in which we meet today, and pay our respects to the elders present and extend that respect to others, other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are present today. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessings upon the work of this council, to direct and prosperous liberations to the advancement of this city, and for the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. I will now ask everyone to stand while I read the vicaries and main standing for the signs. That's not finished. Thank you. Would like to acknowledge Christian Decock, Helen Barnes, Shamoin Cameron, Ronald Hush, Brian O'Brien, O'Byrne, sorry, Robert Boakes, Rhoda Stephens, Gary Patton, Lynette Medlin, Christine Turan, Anna Helamina, Andrew Nelson, Peter Crotty, Joy Hindle, Lilian Surtain, Jean McKeever, and Janet Fielder. Thank you. Okay, item four, the attendance reports we do have one applauding of council Simpson this evening. Leave of absences there are none. Item five declarations of members' public interest. Twenty members have been good much prepared. There is none. Thank you. Item six, the previous minutes, there is recommendation of 6.1. Someone like to move that. Thank you, councillor Knox and seconded councillor Santuzzi. There's no discussion or debate. So I was a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's carried. Thank you. Item seven, deputation and presentations this evening. We do not have any. Item eight petitions, there are nil. And item nine matters adjourned, all eight on the table, there are nil. Item 10, public question time. We do not have any questions from the public this evening. Thank you. We go to item 11, which is the elected members' activities. They are up on the screen there, and I do ask if any councillors would like to perhaps discuss anything that they've attended at this point. Savannah and Kent, but it has been quieted. Sorry. Thank you. I think we will move on to committee reports. 12.1, the audit committee meeting minutes on the 4th of October 2022. The recommendation is there. Councillor Stupos is moving that. Thank you. Someone might to second that. Sorry. Thank you, councillor Knox. Thank you. Really straightforward. I take that as being read and understood. Can I have a show of hands? All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Item 13, 13.1.1, the Office of the C, Chief Executive. The first item is 13.1.1, the draft EPLGA charter and the proposed amendments there. On page 22. Take that as being. Yeah, take that as being read. Do you have any questions? Thank you. All right. I want to give someone to move that. Councillor Stupos has moved that. Thank you. And councillor Knox is seconded that. You answer a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's carried. Thank you. Page 38, the CEO's action reports. I'll take that as being read. And if there's any questions to the CEO. Have you a question?
I do. Karen Latch to Black Oak Cove. My recollection is a bit different to what the recollection sends to be in the report. Late in the life of the previous council, then councillor Antonia got heavily involved in this, and the reports came to council from start as well. And at that stage, we were told that we were negotiating a licence to sell the water, SA Water, and then we were later told the licence had come through and we could do that. So I just want to know what the true situation is. Is that the case, or is the modern model the case?
I'll answer first. Can you question?
Question is, is my recollection correct? Do we always have the right to sell the water as of about four to five years ago? Or is the current situation correct?
Hey, Christian.
Thanks. Through the chair, I think we do have a licence to sell the water. But what we don't have is a process that's set up or some of the systems that are required in order to carry it out. We've only recently installed water meters, for instance, to know what the volume is. And there's a series of requirements about being licensed, may not be the word, but to be sort of skilled and qualified to be able to carry that out, there are a series of requirements that are needed. And staff at the moment don't have those qualifications to be able to carry it out. So it is something that we are still working through. Most recently, we did contact SA Water to see if they could take on the role of water provider, given that they're the main water provider in South Australia and are better set up to handle such a situation than council is. It is, it presents some difficulties for a council to do it.
But Christian, that's all.
I'm just a bit horrified that we've got to a stage now, four years on, we haven't done it. You know, I'm just a little bit horrified. Can I have three more for four years?
Right. Any other questions? Thank you. CEO's reports. No. Right. Last. Thank you. I would like someone to move that recommendation. Oh, sorry. Are you moving that, councillor Stupos?
Yeah, I know. I will. I did ask a couple of questions.
Sorry, apologies.
The Northern Coastline cottages, open lights, building update, this place and the end John Air. They were the new CEOs. They come off for some reason.
Through the mayor, the CEO's report picks up previous resolutions or actions from the council. None of the, of the items that you just mentioned were not specific council resolutions that have been previously reported on the action report. We can provide an update on each of those items if you want. I could do that verbally now. You can just mention which ones again.
Doesn't affect me anymore going forward. The new council can take those up.
So just for the benefit of councillors, once we action a council with pollution, I think flag that has been actions, and then we remove it from the action report, noting that in some instances there will be further work that's required. There's, um. Each of those items, certainly things like the Johnny High School, we've provided recent updates on that one. Leading news, we've provided recent updates to council, which are the other two things that you just mentioned.
Probably some of the disposal of surplus assets to council requirements, the Northern Coastline and the cottages.
Yeah, so we provided a briefing to councillors regarding the Northern Coastline cottages. Just thinking it was the last briefing session. May councillors do. I'm not sure if you were in attendance.
Oh, yeah.
And then the disposal of assets is something that we've provided a report to council in terms of a process, and we're undertaking that process in line with the council resolution.
Okay, so I'm moving that. Thank you, councillor Stupos. You may have a second please. Councillor Knox. Thank you. Show of hands. All those in favour? Eric, thank you. 13.1.3, CEO's for national stability. Did you want to speak to this, Mr Justin?
Only to say that this has been through the water committee and should be ready in conjunction with the annual financial statements. So happy to reply to any or respond to any questions that councillors might have.
Councillor Stupos, do you have a question? Councillor Knox.
Not so much a question as a comment. On page 44, there's a red flag warning to resort there. This is also an indication that council is currently not operating in a sustainable manner.
People have a statement, not a question, so I'm happy to respond if it's clarification fine.
Okay, so there are no other questions. I asked for someone to move the recommendation. Councillor Knox, seconded councillor Santuzzi. Thank you. Show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Then. Went 2.1, the audited financial statements are there. Page 46. Right. Do you want to speak to those at all?
Like it is read.
There is a typo on page.
Oh, sorry. Can you speak up a bit?
Error, typo error on page 125, item 5. I'd send about that typo in there.
The next. This is page 46, the corporate services. Which is, yeah, that's mine. That's mine. So 13.2.1, the audit financial statements are there in front of you. John, are you going to move? Please, councillor Marshall. Sorry. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. And may I have a second? Councillor Stupos, thank you. Show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Yeah, 13.2.2, which is, I think, referring to councillor Stupos. At page 115, we have a recommendation there in regards to the financial results. Would someone like to move that? There's no question. West Timor, are you going to move that?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Marshall, are you seconding that? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Page, uh, sorry, page 131. 13.2.3, the budget review for 2022/23. Anyone want to speak to that? We'll take that as being, as being read. Questions, councillors? Someone to move that? Councillor Knox, thank you, is moving that? I have a second to please councillor Marshall. Thank you. I ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Right, page 150, 13.2.4, the monthly budget report. As a receiver notes, this particular report, September 2022. Councillor Marshall, are you going to move that?
Well, sorry, I didn't realize it. Oh, we'll, that's fine.
Yes. No questions first?
No, no.
Councillor Pond, are you seconding that? Thank you. Right. I've asked for a show of hands. All those in favour? Yeah, that's carried. Page 166, 13.2.5, the quarterly reports. I want to speak to that. We'll take that as being read. Thank you. If you have a question, all right, no questions. I look for someone to move that. Councillor Knox, thank you. Because I want to second that. Councillor Stupos, thank you. A show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Right, 12, sorry, page 172, 13.2.6. The recommendation there for the audit committee's annual report to council. You have a, yeah, there's no questions in regards to this report. It has obviously gone through the committee, et cetera. So councillor Stupos is moving that. Thank you. And councillor Marshall is seconding that. Thank you. Right. Answer a show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. To make mention, thank you to the audit committee for all the work they have done over this, over this time. The work done. Thank you, everyone that's been involved, is here tonight. Right, um, city growth reports, we don't have any, and also infrastructure, we don't have any as well. Obviously, being in caretaker mode and so forth, there's not much of a agenda this evening. So we then come to 14.1, page 199, which is for my other seven agents. And they're up on the screen. Do any of my councillors have any questions for the last time in regards to any of my activities? Um, okay, thank you. Ask for someone to move that please. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Stone, seconded councillor Pond. Thank you. Show of hands. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, notice there's a motion there, a nil, and we then come to questions on notice, which are up on the screen, from councillor Knox. Councillor Knox, do you want me to read them out? Thank you. For that, the screen for all to read and to then also see what our responses are. We'll just leave that up there for a bit very much for those. Thank you. For sure. Saturday and the pitch, I mean, it's as well. If you have one on that website, most rate as well.
Let's make a comment. I appreciate the staff putting the answers together. Because these are questions that I've had from members of the community. There's a good answer to it. I appreciate that.
Thank you for those questions. I mean, I think the branch of council many a part of the community. Okay, thank you for that. I think the number today has been.
That been missed it.
Okay, thank you. You've really counted, Mr Stupos, page 5. Has the council received a development application from government department on that?
Through the mayor, no, council has not received a development application in relation to the hotel development, noting that the developers can submit a development application either to council slash the regional assessment panel, so locally, to be assessed locally, or to the state planning commission. The developers have not submitted a DA to either of those two bodies at this point in time.
I think so. Probably in May, June.
And with the last reference there, subject to development approval, and this is the response provided from the developers.
Right, thank you. Okay, did one manage to read those through? Thank you. Right, first, item 17, questions without notice. Get pity, mayor.
I just have one.
Certainly.
I thought seeing this would be the last of this council. If I'm fortunate to be back here in a month's time, I have others that will then follow. But one tonight, it's a proverbial one. What action plan do we have in place right now to address the weed situation, which is again disgraceful throughout our city, particularly areas that are out of sight of main streets? Thank you.
Just someone to like to respond to that?
Thank you. Through the mayor, our standard practice is we have two full-time staff operating in terms of weed spray, and they try to get through a program of getting through all of the city every eight weeks. So we do have a list of streets and alleys, laneways that are sprayed on a routine basis, and we just cycle through that eight-week program. So at any point in time, if it's an alley or a laneway that hasn't been sprayed recently, it could be as old as seven or eight weeks, but that would indicate that we would be there in the next week or two. So that is our service level that we have agreed at the moment.
Okay, with respect. Does that mean we just spray three-foot-high weeds that are growing and leave them there to die? No mention about the mowing. I don't want to finish this term on a grumpy note. Everyone knows I've raised this more than once. We've tried, it's been attempted to be tackled, but I see no genuine result from administration to solve a problem which has been going on for a long time. We've talked about the need for greater resources, and again, with respect, I don't see any evidence from administration that you see this as an important issue of community expectations. It may not fit in with our long-term livability, but it is livability that is seen as important by many of our residents today. Thank you.
That's not mentioned after the question. Have you a question, councillor Knox?
Absolutely. I had a phone call this afternoon from that lady who was reasonably upset. Resides at Village Life. Village Life was having continual spate of break-ins. And the reason behind those break-ins is quite obvious. If you had a drive around, which I did before I came to the meeting tonight, in Chug Street, or the Village Life, there's an indentation in the fence line. And in that indentation in the fence line, there is a electric transformer about this height, perfect stepping stone to get over the fence. I'm just wondering whether we could have some dialogue with Pax Electranet about that transformer, the local police to see what they're doing about this, the property owners to see what they could do, whether that's a camera there at that point, or some higher fencing at that point, or some firemen at that point, and probably our two local parliamentarians. We need to do something about it. These are elderly residents of our community. And we're looked after there, but the security is obviously a problem. The gates are locked at night time, but these people just hop over the fence.
The question was, can the administration do something about seeking to address the issue? We can certainly raise that with the relevant stakeholders to see whether we can get a solution to that problem, noting that it's not one that's directly in our control, but happy to take up that question with the relevant stakeholders.
Yeah. Have the resident to report. Thank you. Are there any other questions without notice? Think we'll move on. Item 18, motions without notice. There are none. Thank you. Does that be the end of our section of this meeting? We will now ask someone to move and second that we, please, by the way, we need to then go into confidential. So councillor Marshall is moving that, and deputy mayor Stone is seconding that. Ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Now, move into confidential, and we will return into the public arena at the conclusion of our meeting. Thank you. So this meeting has now, please, so closed, pardon me, at 5:55pm. So welcome back into the American Council, so 1pm, 17. The last item on the agenda is our next meeting, and that will not be occurring, which is on March, sorry, on the 7th of November, the elected member briefing session, so that will be, that's been reversed. Okay, so all of our, it's our last meeting. Councillor Knox, do you ask how our online presence has been this evening? We're wanting to watch the meeting. Has there been much uptake? Has there been any?
It amazes me. We've got all these candidates who have never attended a council meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
They don't even log in online.
Well, I just, you know, for the record, to say that we are online and we have been live streaming for many meetings now, as was the request of many people in our community. So, yes. And of course, all of our meetings are on our website, so we've kept our end of the bargain, so to speak. So, and it's worked very well. And obviously, I would like to, it's one of the many, you know, the stock variation. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Simpson, in not being able to be here, has asked me to convey his thanks for the colleagues that he's worked with and staff, and for everything that staff have done and working with the group here. Personally, I'd also like to say the same. I'd also like to thank you for the last three years, being your deputy. It's been a privilege and a pleasure helping you out there and working under you. So again, I think it's been a very successful council. Yes, we don't all agree, and some of us might get grumpy at times. But if you look back on previous councils, I think we've achieved a lot. We possibly haven't communicated it sufficiently to the community that really hold us to account, which I would like to see improved. But we can all walk away irrespective of what happens at the election. I think we can all walk away. I know my colleague over there thinks at times he hasn't achieved what he would like. I think he has, and had a great, great time. Thank you. So thank colleagues.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, yeah, so no, I just, if there's any questions, I'll say, thank you. I think it's been a fantastic four years, and we should be proud of what we've achieved. I wish everyone luck. This is, we're not, this is, you know, in caretaker mode, so we have to be conscious of what we say and so forth in these public arenas. But I just want to say best of luck to all of the candidates here tonight and also in our community for the, for the upcoming election. I wish everyone the best of luck and, and, you know, I look forward to looking at our new council that works together as well as what we have and respects each other within the chamber and also respects our administration. Yes, there's challenges, but I really look forward to seeing that from the outside. So thank you for the opportunity. And.
Echo the colleagues for everybody else. One thing I have been most appreciative of in the last few months is council staff responding to social media. I think that's helped council members out immensely. We were copying it before that, and that's been a very steady influence, in my opinion. So thanks for what it has done.
Thank you. And councillor Marshall?
I would just read right and say thank you to my esteemed colleagues. It's been wonderful working with you all in a collegiate sense. Thank you to the staff for your cooperation and your help and assistance. Thank you, mayor, for your, for your job over the last four years and CEO. And yes, best of luck to all candidates, both in the chamber and in our community. So thank you.
Councillor Pond?
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone. It's been amazing four years working as a.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone. It's been an amazing four years working as a team. I've really learned a lot. I've enjoyed it. And, yeah. Can't wait to watch this space to see what happens in the next four years. Good luck to everyone running. And, yeah, see what happens. Thank you.
Councillor Westerman?
Yes, it's been amazing four years. I'd like to say that thank you to everyone and good luck.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, well, on that note, yeah, goodbye. Now to clear the meeting closed. Thank you.